Scott?
Here.
Waters?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Greckin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lots of proclamations today.
Mayor? Mayor Scott?
Barrett.
Would you pull the microphone over in front of you while you read that, please?
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Be glad to do that. Whereas Rotary International founded on February 23rd, 1905, in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations with more than 1.2 million Rotary Club members in 200 countries. And whereas Rotary's international motto, "Service Above Self," inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1985, the Rotary International launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the global polio eradication initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio. And thus, our polio cases have dropped 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than $1.8 billion in countless volunteer hours to the protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries. And whereas there are over 80 Rotary Club members in Sioux City sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, and illiteracy, and the environment in our local communities and abroad. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2019, as World Polio Day in Sioux City, and encourage all our citizens, join me and the Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We certainly appreciate the recognition and obviously a signature project for Rotary worldwide, and we're very proud.
Well, good job. Keep up.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a proclamation for you that says, whereas the citizens of Sioux City, Iowa, stand firmly committed to the quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide safe, engaging learning experiences for children and sportworking families. Whereas Girls Inc. and Beyond the Bell have provided significant leadership in the areas of community involvement and the education and well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are the key to helping our children become successful adults. Whereas Lights On After School, the national celebration of after-school programs, held this year on October 24th, promotes the importance of quality after-school programs in the lives of children's families and communities. Whereas more than 28 million in the U.S. have parents who work outside the home, and 19,4 million children have no place to go after school. Whereas Sioux City, Iowa, was committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing its expanded learning opportunities to well-enclose the achievement gap and prepare young people to compete in a global economy. Now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of the Council, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2019, as Lights On After School Day, and encourage our community to engage in innovative after-school programs and activities, ensure the lights stay on and the doors stay open for all children after school.
I'm Mandy from Girls Inc., and this is Jenna from Beyond the Bell, and we're proud to partner just to bring attention to the amazing difference that after-school programming makes in our community for all of our children, and we're grateful for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys pushed the limit, because I've limited three to a... Three to a... You just made the cut. Whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation and a way for people and communities to take visible stance against drugs. Whereas Red Ribbon Week celebrates the memory of Drug Enforcement Agent Enrique Camarena, who was tortured and violently murdered in 1985 by drug traffickers while serving as an undercover agent in Mexico. And whereas the red ribbon symbolizes a commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyle, no use of any illegal drug, and no illegal use of illegal drugs. And now therefore, I, Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, on behalf of our City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of October 23rd through the 31st, 2019, as Red Ribbon Week in Sioux City, and call upon all citizens to join the City of Sioux City, Sioux Land Cares, and the Elks Club in our community-wide effort to promote this year's theme, "Life is Your Journey, Travel Drug-Free." Thank you for all you do for our community.
All right, I said it in the proclamation, Red Ribbon Week honors DEA Agent Enrique Camarena, and we thank him and all others in uniform who help to keep us safe on a daily basis. Locally, you say that underage drinking is the number-one issue affecting them. We also know that youth who began drinking before the age of 15 are five times more likely to develop alcohol dependence or abuse as adults. Therefore, we continually work to increase the age that young people start using. So with that, Bob is passing out some red ribbons. We ask that you wear them proudly. They were made by members of the Sioux City Young Ambassadors. We ask that you wear them proudly during Red Ribbon Week to show your continued support of a safe, healthy, and drug-free community. Thank you.
Thanks, Brittany.
Before we go to the interview, where are the scouts from? Well, glad to have you guys. Thanks for coming today. And we'll understand if you leave early, because this could be a long meeting. All right, now we'll do a interview with Genevieve Rodosty. How proud is that? Come on up. Tell us your name.
It's Genevieve Rodosty.
Had it pretty close.
Yep.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the library board.
Well, I grew up in Sioux City. I went to Morningside College for history. I've been active in the community in theater for going on 16 years now, but the library is important to me because it is one of the only places with equal access to information and those resources. I personally believe that librarians are some of the truly democratic educators of our cities, and because they help anyone regardless of age, regardless of money, have access to the resources they need to get the information they need. And I would just like to be a part of that and give them my perspective, my enthusiasm, and that's about it, but I hope that's enough.
Questions? Making the application?
Yeah, appreciated that.
Thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I'll let you know. Thank you very much. You're welcome. We'll go to the consent agenda today, which is items 3 through 15C. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll-call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an item, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Again, on any item that there's a lot of dialogue, we'll limit it by doing a show of hands afterwards, and we will limit you to three minutes on your discussion. If you want to come on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Three is a reading of the City Council minutes from October 14th and 15th, 2019. Four is a motion acknowledging the October 8th Board of Adjustment Actions. Five is a resolution fixing parks and recreation fees. Six is a resolution designating depositories for public funds. Seven is a resolution approving an application to fund two housing family self-sufficiency coordinators from HUD. Eight is a resolution approving a second amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with Barker Lamar Engineering for the closed 28th Street landfill. I'm assuming this just goes on and on and on forever.
I actually was going to ask about that as well, Mark.
Is that an assumption I should make?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mark Sims, Utilities Director. It'll go on as long as we continue to have potential groundwater contamination. In order to comply with state requirements for the landfill, we'll have to continue to monitor. In this particular case, one of the sample results came back with cobalt, which is at an elevated level, and we think that that was influenced by the amount of suspended solids in that sample. So these wells will help us to take hopefully a more representative sample and alleviate that problem.
One of my pet peeves is that we drilled these wells on somebody else's property, supposedly. That's what I've been told. Why don't we move those wells and get them out of there? Because we allow that same farmer then to open range on our land at Bacon Creek. That's not fair to the rest of the people that may want to bid on it.
The wells that I'm familiar with, Mayor, are all on our property.
Okay, so...
And these new ones will be on our property.
So we don't no longer have that dispute with that farmer out there?
I understand that farmer is deceased, but...
No?
No.
His son bought his operation out.
No, we don't.
Well, he's still free-ranging out there. He's still on our... He's still putting his cattle on our property. Am I right, Kelly? Well, we'll follow up, because...
Okay.
All right.
I just marked my... And I apologize, my notes I had left, but I was going to ask you just about the long-term vision. I think we spoke on the phone, and I wanted to give you a call earlier today, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at some long-term solutions, because this is probably still going to be just a temporary to address what we have right now. Is that correct?
Well, you can probably confuse this with the other issue I spoke with you a week or so.
Oh, maybe that was it, then.
Which was related to methane, so that's...
Yes, it was.
A different part of the landfill than this, so...
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Number nine, a resolution appointing Steve... Help me out.
Pastolka. Pastolka.
Pastolka as Assistant City Attorney Two. So Nicole, go ahead, or Amber?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, Stephen is present here with us today. I'm recommending Stephen for appointment to the Assistant City Attorney Two position. We interviewed quite a few candidates and received resumes over a several-month period. Stephen is our choice and selection for the Council's consideration. He's currently with the Cornwall Avery Bernstedt &amp; Scott Firm in Spencer, Iowa. He's a Morningside College graduate, was a judicial clerk here in Sioux City, and interned with the Hyman Firm as well. Introduce you to Stephen, and if you have any questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer.
Stephen, where did... I want to clarify, there's no relation to me. There was never a Scott smart enough to go to law school, so... No one was questioned. No. I know, I knew you weren't, but I just wanted to not have him start off on a bad foot.
Sure. The start date would be January 2nd. Stephen has some private practice matters that he needs to hand off in his firm prior to being available to start with the city, so it would be after the 1st of the year.
Where did you go to law school, Stephen?
University of Iowa, sir.
I know. Nicole may have said that, and I probably missed it, so... But thank you.
That was a very good introduction. Thank you.
Go ahead and say a few words if you'd like.
Well, sure. My name is Stephen Pastolka. My last name is actually how it's spelled, although I know it doesn't help to say that. It is true. Like you said, I've called Sioux City my home for probably the better part of the last decade, and I always sort of saw myself in municipal opposition eventually. Got a little experience of that in private practice, representing a lot of schools in rural northwest Iowa, and it'd be my honor to apply those skills in favor of the city.
It's good to have you back down in Sioux City, man.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yep. Congratulations. Ten's a motion appointing Joshua Shanda to the Environmental Advisory Board. Eleven's a resolution awarding a purchase order to Mid Country Machine for a Kobicco excavator. Twelve are authorizing... Actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Nelson Commercial Construction for two park shelters. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Global Engineering and Construction for the Arts Center renovation project. Thirteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom to maintain underground cable near 11th and Division Streets. B is a resolution proposing to lease property to USC OC for the operation and maintenance of a communication system at 4201 Cheyenne Boulevard. Mayor, I need to abstain on that item for conflict of interest. C is a resolution announcing the intent to accept the proposal of the Friends of Andrew Yang to lease land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area and scheduling a hearing, property in the ground transportation center at 521 Nebraska Street. Fourteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have questions. Fifteen are receipt a minute. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5-0. Sixteen's a recommendation of planning and zoning. A hearing in ordinance vacating the alley near 1213 South Royce Street and 4014 Stone Avenue. The petitioner is Jane Barr. The P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing is now open. Anyone can speak. Go ahead.
Jason Gary, Chair of Planning and Zoning. We heard the item, as well as a number of neighbor discussion items in regards to vacating this entire alley. Staff did deny it, but upon hearing from the neighbors and discussing the terms of the vacation and the ability to purchase the property, we felt that it was still... We felt it was appropriate that it be vacated, because there's no way the public's going to access this property for anything in the future.
And after that discussion, staff came around to the same conclusions, or...
If staff wants to address it, they can. My impression from the denial was that there were neighbors who objected to... Initially objected to the vacation. Usually when that's the case, the staff are a little reluctant to recommend approval. The discussion was had that they had the opportunity that this all, this entire land plot was not going to go to that individual person requesting a vacation. Once that got clarified, and we also clarified that about access to the backyard and things of that nature weren't going to be necessarily denied just because we're vacating, I think that protest and those concerns simmered down, and as a result, we felt comfortable approving it.
Anyone want to be heard? Jason, if the adjacent property owners do not purchase...
Yep.
Their half, then it'll just continue to be owned by the city?
Yeah, unless there is a purchase made by a homeowner, it'll still be... It'll be vacated, but not owned by somebody else, yes. That's the way I've always understood.
Well, if the north person doesn't buy it, the south person has the right to buy the whole.
Yeah, that's correct. We always give the right of first refusal to the person who's most adjacent. If they don't want it, then the other party could potentially purchase it. And I think there was some interest. I think there was some interest from the owners that once they understood they could purchase their half of it, that there was some interest that they could... That they would probably go ahead and buy it.
All right, thank you. No one to be heard. Hearing is now closed. Passes 5-0. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? No. I'll move that. Second.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
I. I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Seventeen's a hearing in ordinance vacating a portion of West Street. Petitioners Mark Baker, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open. Anyone can speak for or against the ordinance. Go ahead, Jason.
This one came forward. There was a lot of support from the people who live right around here. In fact, it was pretty unanimous that everybody wanted this vacated and closed off. The potential purchaser wants to go ahead and close it off. There's just a lot of activity they don't want around, and this isn't necessary for our transportation network, so we agreed.
Anyone to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule? No. I'll move it. Second.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Eighteen's a resolution approving the final plat of Shirley Oaks Edition, 1914 South Fairmont. Petitioner Gene Sherman, P&amp;Z recommends approval. I'll move it. Second. Anything on this?
Just it was presented. We had a number of questions to staff and some engineering questions about the layout of the land and the future development. Some adjacent neighboring owners had questions about development and how it would work, but ultimately, the planning zoning recommends approval for the final plat.
Is that basically that ditch?
It's basically that hole. It's that whole site.
I know ground to the south is available, but...
Yeah, 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 yeah. So no, it's basically a development, and the staff can... If you have more questions, the staff are ready to answer them. But basically, it's that whole wooded area is intended to be developed and platted out, and we talked about which lots would actually be developable, which ones wouldn't be developable, things of those nature.
Behind Transit Plaza.
What's that?
Behind Transit Plaza.
No, but we're not behind Transit Plaza. We're off of Fairmont.
Where are we at then? I'm...
It's at the bottom of the hill.
Yeah, bottom of the hill on Fairmont when you're... Fairmont when you're going to be...
Oh, no, I know where you're at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or from miles in. I drove by both of them, but okay, you're right.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And that one would need to come back and talk about the different lots and everything like that, too, right?
I don't believe it does come back.
No, that's the final plot.
This is the final plot. So at this point in time, once the final plot is approved, the developer has the right to go ahead and develop and market the lots in a manner they see fit. So there won't be any additional review unless there was to be significant changes to the site design.
Okay. Passes 5-0. Nineteen's a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of the IDOT for temporary easement in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area, the property at 1100 Block of Chris Larson Park Road. I'll move that. Second. The hearing is now open. Would anyone like to be heard for or against the item, please? Seeing none, hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty was posted as a resolution authorizing the sale of the land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD urban renewal area to IDOT, the property at 1100 Block of Chris Larson Park. I'd like to amend that to add hearing on the front of that, so I'll move that. Second. On the amendment?
Moore?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Now they... I'll move the amended twenty. Second. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to be heard on this item? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Twenty-one is a hearing and resolution approving a temporary easement of the property at 100 Riverside... Pardon? It's passed 5-0. I was getting a look from the... I know. Yeah. Property at the 100 Riverside Boulevard, the petitioner is IDOT. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open. Would anybody like to be heard on this item? Seeing none, it's closed. Passes 5-0. Twenty-two's a hearing and resolution approving the sale of property and authorizing a deed to the property at 100 Riverside Boulevard, the petitioner is IDOT. I'll move that. Second. Hearing is now open. Would anybody like to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes 5-0. Ordinance is twenty-three's an ordinance adding a Northbrook Urban Revitalization Area Plan to the municipal code. I'll move first reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard? Passes 5-0. Anybody opposed to waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move it. Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Waters?
Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
I'll move second and third.
Second.
Passes 5-0. Twenty-four's an ordinance repealing Chapter 7.10 Pitbulls prohibited with municipal code. First consideration was approved on October 14th, 2019. I'll move second reading. Second. Anyone to be heard? Again, we'll go every other time if we can, so that gives everybody the benefit of having an opportunity to speak on the item.
Yep. Anyone that would like to speak can come up now. If you'll just pull the microphone in just a little bit.
No problem.
Debo?
My name's Derek Hardnett. I'm a lifelong Sioux City resident. I have left this city and came back to this city due to this malicious ban, spearheaded by a council member who has over and over again proven himself to be illegitimate of any power in any faction, and a despicable resident of this city that I love. Disabilities I do have. I have a registered dog now, and just moved back, finding that I have a way to console what I have. This is my son, Bucho De Niro Alphonse Hardnett. This is my daughter, Akasha Macy Azul Hardnett. Both taken advantage by, due to the fact that people cannot get past their prejudice. Ask yourself, look yourself in your soul. Have you ever judged somebody based upon their hair, the color of their skin, the fact that they have tattoos? Does that make you fear them for what you don't know? These dogs are no different than any dog. As I said before, I can teach a Chihuahua to not stop until you kill it. We have former council members that were against the ban to begin with, that now state that they supported it. It's a travesty. This is no better than racism. We're not hanging people from trees anymore. We're banning dogs. Why? Because we fear what we don't know? There are service animals. As I stated, I have one. They're here. Where's the disruption and the chaos? Where's the evil? It doesn't exist. I implored the council to come to my home and view my dogs. See their behavior. See their character. Every single one refused. And then the mayor at the time. Turned around, said he regretted what he did. It's quite obvious, when you have a league that has ties, you'll make movement.
Your three minutes are up, so I'm gonna ask you to run.
That's all right. I'm done saying what I've gotta say, but look at yourselves. And think about it, because your children are more dangerous than any of these dogs will ever be.
I also need you to give us our, your address, please.
I'm at thirteen eleven Jackson Street.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Debo.
Somebody else would like to speak for the continuation of the ban? For the continuation of the ban, right?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. My name's Marjorie Haddig. I'm at fourteen oh nine Prescott Street. I'm totally against this ban. As you can tell, I have one that's a service dog.
Wait a minute, I, I, I ask you very. We're going every other one, I'm sorry. You can go ahead, but I ask, you're, you're for the ban?
I'm against the ban. I don't believe.
Right, and that's what I ask you. Were you for?
I'm sorry.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I've had eighteen spinal surgeries. I'm a severe diabetic that I can hit ten at one minute and the next minute I'm over five hundred. My dog has been trained to teach me when my blood sugar's too high or too low, so I don't die. I have post, uh, depression really bad. And if it wasn't for this dog, I'd be dead today. I have had a machine put into me to keep me alive from all the pain because of the morphine that I had to have from all the surgeries. I have an imbalance problem, so if I fall, I can't even get up on my own. And this dog is what helps me and has saved my life numerous times. And if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be here. And I think you need to consider the ban, that these dogs with their strength can help adults and children to get up off the ground to live and survive in our society. I looked it up today and it said there was a hundred and thirty-nine dog bites this year in Sioux City, or last year, I'm sorry. I was bit three times by a Chihuahua that the neighbor let run loose in my neighborhood. I have a big dog that stood there and took a biting from this dog and had its ear ripped open and had to go have surgery because of a Chihuahua. But yet you guys are condoning and letting things happen like that and saying that this is a bad breed? All dogs can be bad. It's how you raise them and how you treat them in your home with the respect and the love they deserve.
Anyone that wants to speak for keeping the ban? Just a second, Jim. Well, you can go, you guys can both go, cause we'll, then we'll be two and two.
Okay, all right. Okay, pit bull ban. As, as, uh, the Chihuahua wouldn't put a lot of fear into me, the pit bull would, okay? As somebody, I, I'm a.
I need your name and address, please.
I'm sorry. Richard Cuderna, forty-eight thirty Bradford Lane. Okay, anyway, uh, would you rather? There, there was just a dog bite. I don't know whether it was a pit bull or what it was. Anyway, a dog bite's a bad deal. And, uh, the problem with, uh, some animals is that they're a whole lot more powerful than other animals. So I ask you this. I don't know, has anybody heard whether it was in the paper about the, the bite? Was it a pit bull or was it a different dog? Does anybody know that?
It was American Bulldog mix.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway, uh, the, my, the way I understand it is if there's a predominance of, of, uh, of breed in the animal, when the human, him, humane society or animal control picks them up, why, it has to be considered a pit bull. That's, that's, that's what they explained to me, anyway. I've had the, uh, chance to get bit by one of these guys and, uh, I was wearing this watch and I was wearing a coat. And he stopped when he got there. All the while, the gentleman was sitting on the step saying, don't worry, he won't bite you, he won't bite you, and he came running right over and he bit me. So consequently, I disagree with that. Now, if you're gonna get bit, would you rather get bit by a pit bull or a collie? Both of them can be service animals, okay? But I understand that people want service animals. And they're necessary and I've, in our church, where there's a boy that comes in and he's got a dog that, uh, uh, is a diet, trained for diabetes and, uh, lays down on the floor and behaves itself properly, obviously, but you could probably train a pit bull to do the same thing. Now, what could do more damage? You know, whereas, if I'm gonna be faced with, sorry, would you rather get bit by a pit bull or by a collie? Obviously neither. Which one could do you more harm? How about if you get bit by a pit, pit, wow, bit by a pit bull or a Maltese? But I'm sure all the owners of these dogs enjoy the companionship equally. They've already said they did. The ability to do bodily damage is off the charts. Pete Greton is, can is right. If you're gonna make a mistake, mistake on the side of caution. And get a dog that doesn't have the, the ability to do the damage like this. That's only, like, now I understand Rhonda Capron's got a, a dog. I'm not here to say you ought to be disqualified to vote just because you got that.
Listen, we're gonna.
Just let him speak and then you can.
We will visit on that in a minute.
Let's get his three minutes.
Yeah, well, in any of them. Okay, uh, it's kind of a Russian roulette type thing. Would you rather play Russian roulette with a three fifty-seven Magnum or a cap pistol? Okay? That's, that's my view of the thing, because there's a lot.
Your time's up, Dick.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks. Rhonda, if you wanna respond, now respond.
Well, I have a lot more to say, but I'm, I'm just gonna make this comment and then I'll, I'll do my other, my other later. In response to this gentleman and to Mr. Rixner about me abstaining. Mr. Rixner had it in the, in the journal yesterday that he thought that I should abstain. I'm not gonna abstain, and I'm gonna tell you why. First of all, these votes are thought-out opinion votes, okay? If I was to abstain, why shouldn't Council Greck, Greck abstain? I wanna know what, I wanna know what Mr. Rixner says about that, because we're voices on both sides of this issue. Pete looks at it completely di- different than I do. So, and he's voiced his opinion and I respect that. I think we ought to respect both sides. Makes sense to me, doesn't it? So shame on you guys thinking that I should abstain, but nobody else should. I have a pit bull mix. Bottom line is, I have a pit bull mix. I'm not sure if he's a pit bull. You know, may, maybe I should have him checked out. You know, I, I tell you, I think it, every dog out there can be, is a biter. You can't tell me that, we've all bitten, gotten bitten by a dog or by a cat. You know, I had a pony, he bit me. You know, are you gonna outlaw those things too? No. So I'm, I'm not, I'm done saying what I gotta say right now, and I will follow up when everybody's done.
You want the second for? Yep. Jim?
Jim Rixner, one fourteen Midville Avenue. You start off with a congenial note. I want, you know, I respect all of you. I think you're all the good owners, otherwise you wouldn't be here, okay? So congratulations. Here's the problem. We had a study session on this. You all never even had a study session on this. You moved directly to an ordinance. I think that's arbitrary. I think that's capricious. This should've gone on first, where you can hear citizens about what the issues are and then move to an ordinance.
We've, no, just a minute, timeout. Your councils did it different than what this council does. Your councils also did a lot of third readings. We're not doing that. We're giving everybody an opportunity to come here a lot and talk. So if you, it, well, you know what, then I'll move, we defer, Jim, so that you can have your pre-council, but that's not, there's nothing, it's like the, how do you impeach a president, Jim? You and I get along pretty well, but how do you impeach a president? Whoever is in charge of the House of Representatives sets the rules. The Constitution's pretty clear. We can have pre-councils or we can have open discussion like we're doing today. And it's, there's no violation of any rules. We're certainly giving everybody an opportunity to talk. So I, I think that's an unfair indictment on this council. I'm gonna be perfectly honest with you. I don't agree with that, so.
Fine. I, I understand that. Number one, first of all, what I said to the people in this room, I sincerely mean. The problem is the ten percent or plus people who are drug owners who will have pit bulls again. The problem is the ten or fifteen percent gang bangers, the wannabe gang bangers, that'll bring their pit bulls back. The third problem is what you all identified here. Thirty to forty percent of the people who own the pit bulls have no idea how to take care of them. That's why my grandchildren will be in danger, and that's why wherever I went this past weekend, people said they agreed with me. Number two, let me be very clear about something. I think you're putting the city in jeopardy, but I also think you're also putting the city in financial jeopardy. If a pit bull bites me, I'm gonna sue the owner and I'm gonna sue the city for repealing a highly effective ordinance that was keeping this city safe. And that's what will happen, and it's gonna come out of your pocketbook and my pocketbook when those suits take place. And finally, I respect what I heard this day about conflict of interest. But I respectfully suggest that that decision be made through the state attorney general's office in relation to whether there is a conflict or not. And if this council doesn't wish to pursue that, I respect it. I'll pursue it individually.
Are you talking for both of us or just me?
For anybody on the council, okay? Who owns a pit bull, all right? So.
Oh, my God.
I'm, I'm not side skirting anything.
Oh, my God.
So thank you for your time, gentlemen. I do want you to please consider the danger you're exposing this city to financial danger, but more importantly, the danger to our children and grandchildren.
Thanks, Jim.
Right. Well, um, we can ask the county attorney to do it.
You have a sick stomach? Take it easy on page two and three.
Thanks.
My name's Stephanie Marin. I live at thirteen fourteen Hill Avenue. And while I had my whole speech all figured out and game changers just kinda got thrown, so I just heard that if you overturn the pit bull ban, that this gentleman will then turn around and sue the city. So are we saying that because we have a pit bull ban, that every other animal out there that has bitten somebody? So should those people be suing the city because you didn't put a ban on all large dogs? It's absurd. I had a pit bull that was grandfathered in. We lost her when she was fifteen. My dogs have always been family members. Never been a pet, never been left out in the cold. I have pictures of her when she was two days old, sitting on the couch, and that pit bull would sit there and would not move. Now, do I believe that you should leave children and dogs unattended? Absolutely not, in no circumstances. But it comes down to responsible ownership. USA once admired the breed for its quality that it liked in itself. Friendly, brave, hardworking, worthy of respect, and they became the all-American dog. Um, there was a pit bull named Stubby in World War One. Most highly decorated dog, actually got even promoted. Up rank to sergeant through combat. And then we have the media outlets who have successfully created terror amongst people about this breed. But it had a chance to prove itself differently in two thousand seven when Michael Vick's place was raided. Out of the fifty-one dogs, forty-eight of them were rehabilitated after being put in that situation. These dogs are just not naturally aggressive. If you look into it and you do the research, before these dogs go into fight, they are starved to death. You starve two human beings, you put them in a pit with some food, they're gonna do the same thing. These dogs did not fail society. Humanity has failed them through selfishness and greed. And it's sad because it shows proof that humanity has hit an all-time low. Judging a dog's temperament by its appearance is like judging a person's personality by the color of their skin. Something one would hope humankind had learned from in its history.
Thanks.
This is my daughter Jill, and she just wanted to read something also. Did you go in the mini size?
I had a dog when I was six. Um, her name was Miko, and she was a really nice dog. She was very nice to people. She, I've, wait, what?
She was thirteen and a half.
She was thirteen and a half years. She died. She was a brown dog. My dad's friends loved Miko. She was around me since I was born. I would put tutus on her. And she was a pit bull. Now I have a dog that is one years old. He is really nice to people. He is really cute. All my friends love him. He is black and white. I don't ever want to lose him.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Also, on page, on the second and third page of those, those are all large dog bites to children. The one on the last page fought for three days for his life and it wasn't a pit bull.
So, uh, I'll ask the question, how many are for the ban to remain in place? Raise your hand, please. How many are opposed to, or how many are for appealing the ban? Okay, thank you. Well, well, you know what, just a minute here, just a minute. Now, you know, we're gonna re, just a minute, just a minute, and let me finish. If you've noticed, the people for appealing have spoken one more time. Yes, you have. Count them. And it's okay if somebody has another turn. Let's, listen, what's wrong in this country is you can't have a meaningful discussion anymore. We can have one here. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's, I'm, this, I'm, I don't have anything else to say except one thing. Mr. Rixner did not say he would sue the city council or the city if you repeal this ban. I respect the council. I was a council member. What I said was, if I am bitten by a pit bull, yes, because I will do what I have to do.
So you sue the city, you get bit by a different dog?
No, because that dog hasn't been banned.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, again.
You understand what I'm saying.
Again.
That's why there's bigger dogs in pits out there.
Here's how we do it. We come to the microphone, okay? That's how we do it here. You don't have to like my rules, but that's the rules, because that's how we keep order here, so that everybody gets an opportunity to say what they wanna say. Yep.
Uh, I just wanna say I really respect, you know, those who love pit bulls and.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Verlinskap, forty-eight twenty Oxford Drive, Sioux City. I really respect these people and I know they love their dogs, and I, and I know that's why they're so much emotional. We all love our dogs or animals. But that doesn't take away from the fact that, uh, in the fourteen-year period of two thousand five through two thousand eighteen, canines killed four hundred and seventy-one Americans. Pit bulls contributed to sixty-six percent of these deaths. Combined pit bulls and rottweilers contributed to seventy-six percent of the total, uh, recorded deaths. Thirty-six U.S. dog bites, but dog bite-related fatalities occurred in two thousand eighteen. Despite being regulated in military housing areas in over nine hundred U.S. cities, pit bulls contributed to seventy-two percent of these deaths. Pit bulls make up about seven, only seven percent of the total of U.S. dog population. In the year two thousand eighteen, the combination of pit bulls, uh, rottweilers, and mastiff guard dogs and war dogs, the types used to. dogs, the types used to create baiting bull breeds and fighting breeds, accounted for eighty-nine percent of all dog bite-related fatalities. And I'm just here to speak for the children and the senior citizens of Sioux City. When I looked at some of the, these, the factual statistics in terms of people who had died, it was little children. It was senior citizens. Some senior citizens who loved their pit bull, but reached, a lady in Siskiyou County, California, when I moved here in 2000. This past year, she reached down to pet her pit bull, it pulled her off her chair and mauled her. And when her daughter came to help her, it mauled her. She survived. The seventy-two-year-old senior citizen didn't survive. And then in Florida, this year, nine-week, or nine-day-old baby dragged out of its crib by a pit bull when the grandparents are babysitting the baby. We're talking about human lives. I don't have offense around my yard. I have my grandchildren come over. They play ball in the backyard, kick the ball. I don't want to have to worry about somebody's pit bull getting out of their backyard, or off of a chain, or a leash, or out of the house when they weren't looking, and having my grandchildren attacked.
I'm going to need you to finish your remarks, if you can, please.
So I'm just saying that I believe the majority of people in Sioux City like that protection, like knowing that these dogs aren't running around Sioux City. And I appreciate the opportunity to share that.
My name is Mark Solheim, and I live at twenty-nine oh nine Garretson Avenue. I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. I noticed that last week, Jim Rixner kept mentioning this number, nine hundred and thirty-eight. It sounds like a big number, and he said that there was nine hundred and thirty-eight municipalities that have pit bull bans. Well, I did a little research this morning, and I found out that in the United States, there are thirty-nine thousand forty-four municipalities in the country. Now, that means that Jim Rixner's nine hundred and thirty-eight amounts to 2.3%. Ninety-seven point seven percent of all municipalities in the country have decided that they don't need a pit bull ban. Now, since then, since his, when they passed that law, pit bull bans have been being revoked, repealed. At present, there are six hundred and twenty-five in the nation on the books. Three hundred and sixty-nine are specifically for pit bulls. There's another two hundred and fifty-six, which are for pit bulls or another breed. During that same time, there had been eight hundred and sixty-eight localities that have either repealed or rejected pit bull bans or breed-specific legislation. Also, twenty-two states have passed preemption laws, which says that their cities within those states are not allowed to pass pit bull bans. Those states are Arizona, California, Colorado, Connecticut, Delaware, Florida, Illinois, Maine, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Nevada, New Jersey, New York, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, South Carolina, South Dakota, Texas, Utah, Virginia, and Washington. Now, some of the cities that have repealed their bans is Burden, Kansas, South Milwaukee, Wisconsin, Mansfield, Ohio, Reynoldsburg, Ohio, Libby, Montana, Florissant, Missouri, Brewster, Michigan, New Albany, Indiana, and Kansas City, Kansas. I would suggest that we should stand with the ninety-seven point seven percent of the country and repeal this ban. We don't need it. And thank you.
Thank you.
That's G-L-E-A-N-N-B-A-K-E-R. I reside at twenty-seventeen West Fourteenth Street. I realize this is a hot issue, everybody. I know you guys all that are here like your pit bulls, you like your pit bulls. I'd like to say that we should keep the ban. I'd like to have you think if there's any way we can come up with a service dog that would help this lady over here, make a, make some kind of a amendment that says that we could keep a dog that's formally trained, not just a companion dog, because anybody probably could get it to make it so that, hey, that's my companion, and I need him. But if it was formally done, I think that that would be a good thing. So I'd ask that you guys keep an open mind to the idea of keeping the ban, but with making some amendments to what we've done with it.
Thanks.
If you can.
Sit down, sit. My name is Robert Dean Nelson, Jr. I live at five nineteen Division Street, Lead Yard, Iowa. I grew, I was born and raised on the west side of Sioux City. I recently moved from Sioux City due to the fact of my dog and my other pit bull. I have two of these. They are service dogs. Both of them are. I was told by a prominent business member in this community, my brother here actually was, when his dog is registered as a service dog, it's either your dog or your job. This is the type of discrimination that we are trying to fight. I drove three hours today to come and support my brother and everyone else in this community. I love Sioux City more than anything in this world. I would fight for this city. It is a proven fact that pit bulls do not have the biggest bite force. It is a proven fact that pit bulls are nanny dogs. Question for the council. Who was, who was in here was raised on the little rascals? Okay, Petey was a pit bull. When you say pit bulls were sixty-six percent, or whatever number you use, you also realize that pit bulls are painted with a broad brush? My dog's an American Staffordshire Terrier, pit bull. You got American bullies, you got English bullies, you've got all sorts of bullies. They paint it with a broad brush. You got like five to six different breeds of pit bulls that are in one group. It's not all-inclusive. My dog is a registered service dog. My dog not only helps me, but also my sixty-eight-year-old retired, medically-retired father. I have severe sleep apnea. I don't breathe at night half the time. My dog, if his dog hadn't woke me up almost every day, I wouldn't be here. Like I said, I've been around these types of dogs for a long time. I also have a four-pound Chihuahua that is meaner than him. My Chihuahua bites me more than he will. I raised kids around these dogs. Everybody that I know is around these types of dogs. I understand people's fear. It's common, it's going to happen. But like they say, you want to play Russian roulette with a cap gun, or whatever, any, if you play Russian roulette with any type of gun, you're dead the same way. If you get bit by a pit bull, a rottweiler, a collie, a bite is a bite. It's going to hurt the same regardless. It is a proven fact, pit bulls' jaws do not lock. They need to stop putting out all this information that is impure and false. I'm a severe head case, and I admit that. I mean, I'm, that's why I have my dog. I'm a severe diabetic. That's why I have my dog. I have severe sleep apnea. That's why I have my dog. I left Sioux City because I wasn't going to sit here and fight Sioux City. I wasn't going to fight to keep my dog with my job or with my housing. I can do the legal route. I can sue the city, as people say. That's a common cop-out. I didn't want to sit here and fight the city over it. I think it's a beautiful thing that you guys are even putting this on the table. I think it's beautiful that the citizens and the people get to speak their mind for or against them. Everyone has their right to an opinion.
Going to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
Yes. And everyone has their right to what they know. But please follow statistics and proven facts and new statistics. And I thank you for this podium and this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Again, we'll only be voting on second reading, will not be voting on a third reading. Before we go any further, I'd, I want to say a couple, well, more than a couple of things, and I'll get in trouble with the city attorney, and that's okay. First of all, the law has evolved. I think that we can all agree that service and companion dogs, no matter what the breed, will, we need to be able to allow in Sioux City. We've not been enforcing any bans on any dogs that are service and companion dogs, and we don't plan on doing that, and we'll need to, no matter what we do, we'll have to address that in an ordinance. We were threatened with lawsuits on pit bulls. This is the toughest part for me, for either side. We're continuing to be threatened with lawsuits, lawsuits that I'm not comfortable that we will win. And the problem with those lawsuits are that if we lose, we get to pay the other side's legal fees. Jim, as far as you're suing the city, we, I did clarify that today. The city has immunity, even though I don't like it. We have immunity no matter what we do with this ordinance. It doesn't mean you can't bring a lawsuit. You can bring a lawsuit on anything, as you know, but the state law is pretty clear that we have the ability to revoke this ban and not be threatened if somebody gets bitten next week, or like last week, which was, as I stated last week, the worst thing that can happen would be a bite, and that's what happened. But I'm fearful that these lawsuits, when you have them, cost a lot of money, a lot of money, that the taxpayers are going to pay if we lose. And I, I have a hard time gambling on that. Jim, as far as the conflict of interest in the Sioux City Journal, there's only a few people that can ask for that. Nicole just looked it up, the statewide elected offices, somebody from the General Assembly or the county attorneys. We don't have the right, as local elected officials, to get an attorney general opinion. We have to go through one of those different groups that do that. Rhonda, you feel like there's any question of a conflict, and we want to put off third reading? We certainly can do that until we get an attorney's general's opinion, or get an opinion that he won't give an opinion. That's the two options you get with an attorney general opinion. You either get an opinion, or you don't get an opinion. And so I'll leave that to you, because I learned a long time ago, and when it comes to a conflict of interest, it's, it's what you feel is a conflict of interest. And if it is, then you should not vote. And if you feel like not, unless there's some legal ramification that the city attorney points out to us, then we're free to vote. So I'm assuming that Rhonda and the city attorney have talked, but that's their business, not mine. So anyway, I just wanted to point those things out to you.
Okay, I'm going to make my final statement. First of all, I am not abstaining. I feel that I have a voice here, and I'm the voice of the people. This is why I got elected in the first place. So it's a hard, it's not a hard decision for me, because I, I think that we are doing the right thing for twofold. First of all, we're looking at maybe threatened litigation. I'm doing this for our taxpayers, too, even though the other side doesn't like it. I'm sure you don't want to be paying a whole lot of higher taxes because of tax bite, or because of a pit-bam bull bite, okay? And we're not talking small. We're talking, it could be two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, and up. This is a hunk of change coming out of our pockets. I'm not going to, I can't vote for it that way. I certainly, I certainly do not want to see any, any kid get hurt. Who does? I don't want to see anybody get hurt. We live in a free world here, kids. Come on now. You know what? You can avoid some things. It doesn't matter what kind of dog you got, you know? If people would take care of their kids like they take care of their dogs, maybe things would be good. You know? I'm sorry. So, you know, to me, it's common sense. Open your eyes out there, you know? Everybody's throwing up, big, oh, God, this city's doing that, and this city can't do that. We could do what we think is best for our people. And I think that this is the best thing, because first of all, we're avoiding lawsuits, okay? That's a big deal. To me, any pit bull out there that is mean, it's the owner. I have seen it. I know it. I have a pit bull that's thirteen years old. I'm telling you, if he came to my door, he'd throw a tennis ball at you. He, he wants to play. And I've got two other dogs out there that are the same way. You know, I raise my kids the same way I raise my dog. Respect. It's all about respect. Bottom line. It tears my heart up right now to have to be given a lecture out here for people are... I tell you what, another thing that upsets me more than anything, I have been called out. I've been in high B parking lot, being yelled at. I've had horrible texts. I've had horrible emails. I don't deserve that. I'm just trying to do what's right for the people. And I know there's a lot of people out there that probably, that feel that, you know, we can't do this, we have to keep the ban. Not me. And I'm telling you, I've been called by people saying, you know, you're up for reelection. This could make a difference. I'm making a difference right now. This is what it's all about. This is why I got, got elected up here, and this is, I'm the voice for the people. That's, that's all, that's what I got. And I'm a voice for the taxpayers, and this, that's the other reason that I'm on this side. So, you know, if they want to, you know, do what you have to do, but, you know, I feel that what we're doing is for the, everybody. It's not just for the pit bull side, it's also for the taxpayer's side. So let's look at it both ways. I'm done.
I guess I would just say, I had kind of spoke my piece last week a little bit, and I don't think I need to rehash some of those points that I made. I'll probably say a little bit more on final reading next week. The only thing that I would say is something that I think the mayor brought up, a good point, that while I have the mic and while I have an audience, I'd like to bring up, I want you to recognize what you all are doing and what you're participating in here in this room is part of a dialogue, is part of a community conversation where we're supposed to have the free exchange of ideas. And I, for one, really believe we should respect everyone's ideas, especially if they disagree with us. I understand it's an issue that people are impassioned about, that people care about, that it means a great deal to them. However, I don't want anyone leaving this chamber and calling out anyone that was on the other side of the aisle, or calling up an elected official, or anything else. I think that's extraordinarily disrespectful, because these are challenging decisions, and people feel very passionate about their stance. And so at the end of the day, I would really just encourage you to look to your right, look to your left, look to the people, look what you put on Facebook, and understand that we are all neighbors, we all live in this community, we all love our families. If we, if we're pet owners, most of us love our pet owners. And most of us love our pets, I apologize. But it's something that we need to continually to check ourselves. I think sometimes we get so ingrained in what our positions are and thinking that we're right and everyone else is wrong, that we fail to have a dialogue. I think we need to respect one another. I, for one, appreciate everyone coming here today and came last week. Some of you have come a couple of weeks. I really appreciate that, and I want to hear from you, and I've appreciated reading the emails, but I want to be, do so in a respectful manner. So please continue to do that. The only other thing that I will say, that I just wanted to bring up for the council's consideration, or at least conversation, I was wanting to talk to Brenda and Cindy because they both deal with this a lot more than I necessarily would, but dealing with people that are in this industry, it's been brought to my community, at least, at least three or four people have emailed me about it, was looking specifically about spay and neutering, as far as when you get licensed, when you license your animal, and whether or not we, as a community, should require that. Now, the angle that some people are taking is that, well, at least when you're speaking about dogs specifically, that it takes down their aggression levels, that studies have proven that. And so I think it's another conversation, another layer to it. They said that obviously, if you're looking at breeding your animal, if you own or operate a breeding operation, you want to have, make sure that that's not the case. However, I think that a lot of times, the wandering dogs or cats, or a lot of times is a spay and neutering problem and not addressing that, and I thought that might be a conversation worth having. I'm not, not submitting anything today or saying that we need to pursue it. I think it's a conversation that before we have the third reading, might be something that we look at doing, because I think we need to make sure that we have the, have the right ordinance, have something in place that's, that's meaning multiple ends, and if, if doing so and encouraging them or requiring them to spay or neuter their pet, if they're not owning and operating a breeding operation at the time of licensure, maybe that's something worth pursuing. So just something that I was thinking about when I was looking at kind of what people were bringing forth as ideas for how we can go forward. But I said it last week, and I'll, my vote will represent this, but I do not believe in a breed-specific ban.
I'll say a few, a few things because I didn't say a whole lot last week. And you're all important to me, the citizens of Sioux City, as well as former citizens. I want to applaud you for standing up for yourselves and standing up for your pets and animals. You actually did a great job. We saw a lot of action today. The reason why I'm being careful with my words is because I'm kind of in a catch-22 here now because you stood up for what you believe in, and that's what you want me to do as your elected official, and you may not agree with me. And I'm kind of directing some of my comments to Mr. Giles because he's a lawyer and he understands how lawyers think. I'm not making any excuses for my thoughts, but it's something I firmly believe in that I want to stand up for. You know, we're governed by the rule of law. It was disheartening, and I'm just going to write it off as I really misunderstood some comments last week, that there are pit bulls in our community that are not, that are not in compliance with the existing ordinance. That's troubling because if I don't at least say to you, that's wrong, we have an ordinance, and you're violating that ordinance, you're breaking, you know, you're breaking the law, it's illegal. If I don't say anything, I'm consenting to that kind of action. And I can't do that, not only as a lawyer, but as a council member and just as a citizen of Sioux City. I don't mean to offend anybody by it, but that's right now what our law is on the books. You have made great arguments on both sides. You truly have. If I thought differently, I would tell you that. I'd say you're weak on this side or you're weak on that side. I don't believe that. But it's divisive. What triggered this, you may ask? That was asked over the weekend. What triggered this? Why is the mayor, why is the city council even considering this ordinance? It's because it was triggered by the threat of litigation, okay? Threatened litigation. I'm trying to take in an ordinance, the rationale for it from 11 years ago by the council then. I'm not going to second-guess ever what a council does because I will be in that position someday, and I don't want to be second-guess what I do. I want everyone to understand my rationale, my reasoning. But what's troubling is, I'm learning from you. I want to stand up for what I believe in. I don't like making decisions under the threat of anything. I don't want to be threatened. You don't want to be threatened. Don't threaten each other because it gets you nowhere fast. Now, that leads me to, on the second reading vote, that leads me to vote against the repeal of the ordinance. I'm just going to lay it out for you. I want to be very transparent. We still have a third reading. But that's what, that's what this council member is struggling with. The mayor raised good points. I heard, I hope you heard them loud and clear. It was under the threat of litigation that we're here. There have to be exceptions made for service animals and for companion animals. We would still need to do that with this, with this existing ordinance. It would still need, and it would still take amendments. Part of me wants to say, you know what? Threaten, you can threaten all you want. Go ahead and act on it, and we'll deal with it. We'll defend it. We'll do what we need to do. Sometimes, when things are so divisive, and you all, I'm serious, you all have excellent arguments on both sides. And for those that want us to repeal, you're saying, no, it's not, it's a weak argument, but it's not. You have excellent arguments. Sometimes lawyers will say, you know what? Maybe this is, this is really for the courts to decide. Maybe that's the route we need to go. Let's let the courts decide because I don't want you to have any false sense of security about what we have in this community with a specific breed ban. That's what I have had, to be honest with you. I'm thinking, okay, we've banned that breed. I'm safe around all other dogs. And I would shake, I would do the same thing you're doing. No, you're not, Mr. Moore. You're not safe. You have to know the owner, you have to know the pet, you have to know the animal, and so on and so forth. But sometimes it's just, it's the right thing to do. You have the court decide. But as Councilmember Capron pointed out, and I agree with her, do we want to spend the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars it would take to have a judge tell us, your ordinance is, it's illegal? Do we want that? And I'm not saying we would get that. We would defend it to the best of our ability. We would hire the best to defend and take on any litigation that would be filed against us. But it is going to be costly. Now, some of you might say, well, Dan, you pay the lawyers and the court system for cost and you try it, or you don't want to see a child get bit? I get that. I get that. So it's not all just monetary. Let's have no misunderstanding, or it's not all monetary. It's the safety of the citizens. And Mr. Gretton, last week, so well stated his case for the safety of the citizens. So there are two things that I'm leaning toward that I would request the mayor and the council. One is, some of you might not like the vote I make today, but it's for the reasons I've outlined. I have to stand up, too, for what I believe in. And I don't like to react or be, I don't, on your behalf, I would never want to act under a threat of anything because the thinking then is not as clear as it should be. Mr. Rixner pointed out to me today, because I listen to him, I listen to everybody, that there's a lot of information here to take in. I mean, and things have evolved. The mayor's exactly right. Things have evolved to what they are today, and things do change. It's for an ever-evolving process, and there's a lot to take in. I have two requests. One is, instead of doing our third reading next week, I would like, I would ask for a deferral so I could have some time to take all this in because once we make our third and final reading, we're done. And I want to make sure my vote is going to be what I think is the right thing to do because that's what it boils down to. You're asking me, just do the right thing, Dan. Just do the right thing. Mr. Baker stated that so well. He said, if you can. And I appreciate those comments because it's like, you know, do this if you can, and if you can't, at least tell me why you can't. So I don't know if I'm making some sense, Mr. Giles. I hope I made some sense to you because that's how I'm thinking it through as a lawyer, and I know I shouldn't be, I'm not practicing law up here. I don't represent the city. We have a very skilled and able city attorney that does that. One thing I was going to argue, but the immunity aspect of it kind of took the wind out of my sails, I was going to say, okay, let's weigh this. Do we do nothing and the litigation comes on and we're defending ordinance? Or do we weigh that against the cost and the heartache we would all have if we repeal the ordinance, someone gets bit, and then they sue the city? Because we did repeal the ban, to your point, Mr. Rixner. We have immunity. So that has kind of taken my argument out because that's actually what I was coming in thinking myself. I thought, we're just really going to open ourselves up to a lot of liability, but with immunity, we're not doing that. Still make the arguments. We went to law school. What did we all learn in law school? You file a suit, you name everybody you possibly can think of, and we let the court sort it out. I don't want that to happen here today. So I would like, I don't, when's our next meeting? After the 28th into November? Is it November 4th? I just, I can get over the fact that I don't like being threatened to make a decision. I'd rather do it under a more deliberate, well-thought-out process. You all have said enough to say, reread what you have and read some more. And I make that pledge to do that because for some of you that do know me, I read everything, and I'll read it more than once. So I would like to at least, I know the vote is, today is on the second reading, Mayor, but somehow I need to, I guess I need to make a motion after we take that vote to ask for a deferral of the...
A deferral wouldn't be necessary. We just need direction as to the next meeting to bring back third reading.
Okay. I just, I just need some time with it. And I apologize, you're all waiting for a decision. You wanted yesterday, but this is a big deal. This is a real big deal for the entire community.
I'm fine with November.
Okay. So those are my comments, Mayor, Council. I appreciate, I mean, I just appreciate the civility that we've, we've shown today. And yes, the mayor had to use the gavel, but that's what the gavel's for, ladies and gentlemen. It really is. And we've got a good leader up here that's going to keep order in what we're doing. Otherwise, we're going to lose why we're even here. So I want to thank the mayor for that. I'll be quiet now. I'll try to be quiet now.
Mayor, can I take a run at it?
Certainly.
I, I think I made myself pretty clear last week, and I won't change my vote, but I do want to hit on a couple of points that both Alex and Dan mentioned. Dan's question, what is the right thing to do, is what always is a question I ask myself. I did that for almost nearly 38 years as a police officer. I asked, what is the right thing to do? And I wanted to be as fair as I possibly could be. And that's very evident in my thinking, at least to my thought processes, that I want to do the right thing in this matter. And it's really not about total numbers of any kind. It's not about the total number of bites. For me, it's really about the severity of the injuries. I think this, all the information I've ever read, the severity of injuries is, far exceeds with this particular species, breed, than any other animal in, that I have had the opportunity to deal with as a police officer and certainly up here. So it's something I struggle with, and I keep coming back to what I said last week. If I'm going to air in a decision, I want to do that in support of people, children, adults. I honestly, again, will be devastated if something happens. I understand the legal ramifications, what the city has to do, and I won't, I won't disagree with that at all. It's just that I'm looking for, maybe in an ideal world, I'm looking for a way to prevent these injuries from happening, not only with pit bulls, whose numbers in history in Sioux City are significant, but also throughout the country. You can Google and read stories and just come away shaking your head and worried to death it's going to happen to me. So I'm hoping that by trying to take in as much information, and I welcome the two weeks, I'm sure I'll be reading more and getting plenty of emails, that I can learn even more. But again, if there's anything I can do, I'm only one person, I'm going to vote where I think I can have more of a opportunity to impact an issue on the safety and welfare of people. I also want to echo what Alex said because I think it's a really important point. And I don't try to generally attach myself to what others say, but it's a really, really good point. Everybody here, it did get loud, the gavel did pound, but for the most part, I think everybody, I want to thank you for your participation. I want to thank you for your conduct, your behavior. I think everybody did a pretty decent job explaining their views. In this world, I think we all understand there are many views, many opinions, and we try to work with everybody as best we possibly can. And for that very reason, I appreciate the fact that the chambers are full, that you took the time to come here. That's one of the things in nearly six years that I've noticed about the council is, we don't have near the engagement from the general public about issues that I thought we would have when I first got involved. Not that I wanted debates every week, but to get input, to tell us what they wanted, what they wanted in their community. And this is one of the biggest ones by far. And again, I appreciate that. I, again, am very glad that you are here and that you took the time to share your opinions. And for that very reason, we all do have opinions, and I'll, I'll probably stick to mine unless I read something in the next couple of weeks that convinced me otherwise. Can we work together? I'm pretty sure we can. And do I have confidence that everybody here will do everything they can to make sure that their dogs are, that they are a responsible pet owner and their dogs are well taken care of and won't be involved in an incident like this? I hope so. I believe that because I think you're taking the time to share that information with us and tell us how important it is to you. And this is a policymaking board that's really, we don't have answers to every questions, but we're here to listen and try to do what's best for the community. So I, too, want to share with Alex that I appreciate you taking the opportunity to get involved in, in the process. And in the meantime, I'll continue to read and do my best to make what I believe is the right decision and, and, and again, that, one that would lend itself to the safety and welfare of all people in the community. So thank you very much for coming, and I think I've said enough, so, for the second week in a row. I might have made a mistake. We're voting to repeal, right?
It'd be a no vote for you.
Yeah, and I hit aye. But I meant, I meant...
You just re-push your button.
Just re-push your button, you're okay.
All right. Got it.
As long as not everybody voted, it's not locked in until everybody votes. Pass is three to two. Any citizen concerns? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
So did we decide? Are we pushing the third reading? Do we need to decide that?
Yeah, we've done that.
I will resumet for November 4th.
Thank you. Be back November 4th. Thank you. Pete, anything else?
No.
Rhonda? Alex?
You thought you'd get out of here.
Yeah, don't worry about me. No big deal, Alex.
Okay. A couple of things that I, a couple, well, first off, the first thing, actually, Mike, both might pertain to you, buddy.
Okay.
The first one, or the first, I'll go legal first, maybe. An ordinance? I had a question about an ordinance of bees. Would that be you? Would you be able to help me find that, locate that ordinance? I had a person that has an outdoor garden, and they were looking at, like, starting bees and having beehives to pollinate the plants and then to capture the honey and everything like that.
The egg zone. The thing that's, has to be in an egg zone.
Sure, there's some state regulation related to that, but he doesn't...
Okay. But yeah, if you can let me know. I don't know, yeah, if it has to be zoned agriculture, if it has to be within a certain block, if you can have so many bees, but you can't have so many, that type of thing. If you can just send me anything, I'd appreciate it. Mike, the other thing that, that I was thinking about a lot today was, you and I have spoke quite a bit on renewable fuels and just really thinking about the fleet, you know, specifically with buses, as well as city vehicles and what we can do. One of the things I was thinking about was, I was at the tri-state governor's conference, and they were talking about what they do at the state level, and Governor Ricketts was talking about in Nebraska, how most, almost all of his vehicles for a study were going to E-30, you know, as far as trooper vehicles and everything like that. My question was what we, yeah, Brittany's very proud, I'm looking to Nebraska for advice. It's a cold day, ladies and gentlemen. No, but what I'm wondering is, do we use an ethanol blend? Is it possible to have vehicles go to E-30? Or when we fill up our tanks, you know what I mean, like the city tanks where people are going and fueling up, do we have an ethanol blend? And I mean, his point was, was short.
State law, you have to.
And his point was short and simple, was just that, well, you know, it's helping farmers, the people in our backyard, it's helping the environment, and it's cheaper at the pumps.
Yeah, so...
But doesn't get as good a gas...
But doesn't get as good a gas mileage.
At ti, yeah, with, well, E85 it doesn't, but with E30, it's supposed to be just about the same. It just depends on the blend.
So the answer is both for transit. So we offer ethanol in the smaller buses, and it is diesel in the large buses, as you know.
Yeah.
So it's both right now. That's our current scenario that we have.
So obviously with diesel, diesel, we get a biodiesel or whatever, but the smaller buses, you're saying that they could use an ethanol blend?
They do right now. Yep, they do, they're regular gas.
But my question is, can we regulate and say, like, I'm looking at police vehicles, city vehicles that we issue to pull. I just, I want to say, "Look, we support the ethanol industry because that's where our neighbors are."
Yep.
And so I'm looking at, if we fill that with E30, then, well, they're going to fill up with E30. Or if we say, citywide, we want to support the ethanol industry, why not encourage, encourage or mandate you use E30? Or E15, whatever would be available.
Sure, let me take a look and see, and I'll work with Dave at CMG and just, you know, because they...
But I think if the city, if states are looking at doing, that are making that conversion, it's better for our area, our region, better for the environment, all those different factors, I really think as a city, we could look at taking that stance as well.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mike. Bees, gas, should I go through the events? No, I think I'm good, I'm good, Mayor.
Already late getting home now, go ahead.
I'm good, thank you.
Another half hour. I'm good, Mayor, thanks. Who we adjourn? Second.
Bat?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Hey, thanks for coming.